Hello, everybody, and welcome to the regularly scheduled city council meeting for March 21st, 2023. First, I'd like to read the land acknowledgement. The island that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jerojigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Eureka acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And if we could get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
I'm here on Zoom, Mayor, and I need to, once again, ask your permission or ask my fellow councillors' permission to participate in this meeting via Zoom. I have a qualifying circumstance, which is that I am functional but contagious, and I thought I'd not put my fellow council members in the public at risk. I'm here at my home, and per the statute, I need to let you know that I am, there's no one over eighteen in the room with me.
Great. Thank you. So, council, may we have a motion to allow Councilmember Moulton to participate in tonight's meeting by teleconference?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote. Councilmember Fernandez absent. Motion carries.
Great. And would all who care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Burgel, we do need to finish taking roll. Thank you.
I apologize.
Councilmember Fernandez? Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Here.
Mayor Burgel?
Here. And there's no report out of closed session because we had none. You guys just missed a great meeting on design review. You maybe caught the tail end of that. It's available on our city website if you're interested. So with that, we're going to start with our mayor's reports. And we have a transit appreciation proclamation. Councilmember Castellano?
Yes, and I believe that Jerome from Humboldt Transit Authority is here. If you want to come up, I'll read it into the record. This is a proclamation in recognition of Transit Appreciation Day, March 21st, 2023. Whereas local and regional public transportation are necessities for our community, and whereas Humboldt Transit Authority operates the transit system in Humboldt County, providing seven-day-a-week transit service to help our communities, tribes, and educational institutions meet our transportation, sustainability, and equity goals. And whereas transit operators and maintenance team members work hard each day to help customers access jobs, healthcare, school, community services, and many other personal, social, and civic opportunities. And whereas the COVID-19 public health emergency has reinforced how vital public transit is to our communities and throughout the pandemic. Transit team members have worked up front, on the front lines, adapting to new work environments and safety requirements, and helping customers to safely get to their essential destinations while also responding to significant events in their own lives. And whereas transit team members start their days before the sun rises and finish them long after the sun is set, including working weekend and on-or-around holidays, while many of us are spending time with family and friends. And whereas, in addition to meeting stringent safety requirements, transit team members must demonstrate customer service, patience, empathy, and understanding to create a welcoming and inclusive environment for community members and visitors. And whereas communities across the United States observe Transit Driver Appreciation Day each year on March 18th, Transit Driver Appreciation Day is an annual event to celebrate the essential service of public transit operators. The date of March 18th was selected to commemorate the first bus line, Lais Pascal Carasse et Saint-Sus in Paris, 1662. Don't know if I said that right. Whereas bus operators keep our communities moving through storms and sunny weather. They are with us every step of the way. On Transit Driver Appreciation Day, we recognize and honor their dedication in giving 100% every day. Now, therefore, I, Leslie Castellano, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, declare March 21st to be Transit Driver Appreciation Day.
Thank you very much, city council, for recognizing our frontline bus drivers. I really appreciate it. I'm a bit humbled to be receiving this on behalf of them. I have to say, as a recent employee of transit, I've been there for almost a year now as a transit planner, I've really been awed by the variety of incidents and the various types of tasks that our drivers really encounter on a day-to-day basis. Their eyes and ears on the road, they look after our public, they drive them safely, they report incidents, and they really do help keep our community safe and moving to where we need to go. So, again, really appreciate this. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, we've got some exciting things happening tonight, but before we get started with those, I do want to give a quick mayor report. I wanted to let you know that we've got some exciting news for our city. We now have a warming center. We've got a church that's decided to step up. That's Lifehouse Church. There are no barriers, so people who are out in the cold have a place to be as long as they're willing. What I will tell you is that I actually experienced Friday night, hanging out over there with people and going around with Shemeka from Uplift, getting people to go to the shelter. And though there are no barriers, I wanted to let you know that one-third of the people that we engaged with went into the shelter. So there's still a population that isn't trusting yet and that we're working to make connections with so that, at some point, we can get them the support that they need. So it's really going to be an amazing thing. I'm just so appreciative of Lifehouse Church and everybody who's made this happen. This has been something that our city has been lacking for a while. And as you all know, everybody in our community has value, and so being able to provide things for people who maybe don't have the opportunities that we all do is really important. You know, and I believe that building people up is how we have a healthy community. So I'm really, again, I just want to say how thankful I am to Lifehouse Church. So if you see Willie or any of them, give them a shout out and a heads up and a thank you because they're doing a fabulous job over there. It is only for extreme weather, so it'll only be when the weather gets cold, which lately is far too often. So, yeah, I just felt that that was important to share, and, you know, it's really a blessing to watch that community also come together because they're all different pockets of community. And, you know, when we went to the shelter, it was center, center. There was soup and there was food, and there were people that hadn't seen each other in a while, you know, and it was like family getting back together, and, you know, what a gift, what a gift we give. So with that, we're going to move it on to Swan Asbury. We'll come up with economic development and talk a little bit about our business and Artist of the Year.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Swan Asbury. I'm the Economic Development Manager for the City of Eureka, and tonight I am bringing before you our 2022 Business and Artist of the Year. So this is a program that we started at the end of 2017, and every month, our Economic Development Commission and our Art and Culture Commission select a Business of the Month and an Artist of the Month. I have on the screen here the list of the 2022 Businesses of the Month. I also, on the left side of the screen, have some photos. Both Commissions recently did a recognition ceremony, so we invited all of the 2022 monthly nominees to come, and the Economic Development Commission gave them plaques and flowers, and then the Art and Culture Commission gave them little coffee cups that say Artist of the Month with flowers, and it was really sweet and heartwarming. So of the 2022 Businesses of the Month, the mayor gets to pick the Business of the Year, and Mayor Burgel has chosen Fresh Freeze. Woo! Fresh Freeze is such an iconic Eureka business, so I'm going to pause the slideshow and I'm going to share a short video that Eddie Alexander made for us, and then we'll invite the owner of Fresh Freeze up. It was just there, one moment.
Welcome to Fresh Freeze. I'm Paula. How can I help you? My name is Paula Hamilton, and I am the owner of Fresh Freeze here in Eureka. I've been part of the Fresh Freeze Corporation for 25 years, and I am super honored to have this caliber of acknowledgement of the 2022 Business of the Year. Thank you. Fresh Freeze started in 1951, and it became an iconic place in Eureka. The community and the support the community gives Fresh Freeze is just amazing. It's an experience like no other, and I think that the community has really inherited that, and they appreciate that moment in time they get when they visit here. You pull into the parking lot, you instantly hear the oldies music, and we also want to create this fun and energetic atmosphere to create new memories for more generations to come. We serve fun food. Humboldt Specials is super popular. Corn dogs are our famous chili. We also have a variety of milkshakes, and people come here and stand in line for the soft serve, and you hear the young kids excited, and that's what Fresh Freeze is all about, is that energy and that positive feeling that you get when you walk up to it. Some people ask me, you know, what does Fresh Freeze look like 10, 15 years from now? And when people ask me, I always think instantly, it'll be exactly like it is today. Red and white buildings, oldies music, and the same energy that you get every time you get out of your car today.
So it doesn't sound like our Zoom folks were able to hear that. We will be sharing that video on social media if anybody didn't get to watch. So Mayor Burgel, would you like to share why you chose Fresh Freeze?
I would love to. So as many people know, I've been born and raised here in Eureka. I've lived here my whole life, and Fresh Freeze has been a huge part of my life. When my parents dated 1,000 years ago, they dated at Fresh Freeze. And when I was a little girl, I would go to Fresh Freeze after church every Sunday for those delicious corn dogs. And then, growing up, as a grown-up, I have two kids myself, and we would ride our bikes to Fresh Freeze, like twice a week, especially in the summer, for the ice cream and the best milkshakes in town, just telling you, best milkshakes in town. And so I just love that if you talk to many people in our city, I mean, how many people have been to Fresh Freeze in this room? Right? So there you go, right? We've all had that just amazing, wonderful experience, and it just kind of brings it back home to our small town and our community and just the gift that we have of all being together. And it just, I have so many great memories of Fresh Freeze. It'll always be a part of my life, and I'm so grateful I get to share that with my own kids, you know, and for many generations to come, I hope. I hope my kids' kids will get to go there, too. So that was the reason that I selected Fresh Freeze, because it is an icon in our city. It certainly has been a positive experience for so many of us, and I just really appreciate the work that you've done. So that's why. Thank you so much.
So I'd like to welcome the owner of Fresh Freeze, Paula Hamilton, up. And we have a plaque and a bouquet to give her after she's done speaking, if she would like to speak, but there's no pressure.
I just want to share, though, that she was not the owner when my parents dated and went there, just so you know. I just want to be real clear.
I just want to say thank you so much. This has been so fun for us, for me and the team at Fresh Freeze, and this level of acknowledgement is just, it's really moving for all of us. And, you know, I've talked to many people, and preserving Fresh Freeze and, you know, keeping it around for many generations to come is my goal, and I couldn't do that without the support of the community. So thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, and now we're going to talk about our 2022 Artist of the Year. So just like the Economic Development Commission selects Businesses of the Month, the Art and Culture Commission selects Artists of the Month, and Mayor Burgel has chosen our May Artist of the Month, Ultra Payne. So I'm going to share a video about Ultra Payne, and then we will invite her up.
Hi, my name is Skylar Celeste, also known as Ultra Payne. I am 22 years old, and I use he/him pronouns out of drag and she/her pronouns in drag. I've been doing drag for six years now. I've grown up here in Eureka, so a lot of my drag has been influenced by a lot of people here in Eureka, like previous drag queens from Eureka's past and a lot of other artists here in Eureka. So drawing inspiration from Humboldt County has been a big part of my drag aesthetic. Pretty much everything nature-wise that I do is inspired by Eureka and the county itself. So doing drag in Eureka has been super, super cool. I've been able to work with a lot of really cool people. Being awarded City of Eureka's Artist of the Year 2022 by Mayor Burgel is super, super humbling. I very much appreciate it, and just thinking, like, the City of Eureka, like, recognizing a drag queen as Artist of the Year is just super, super cool and super, super validating. So I'm very, very grateful, very unexpected, but excited to where the future will go now with this title. And if you want to see more of this, then follow ultra.pain on Instagram to keep up with me and all the shows that I do.
So I guess I'll tell you while we're waiting. So I am so excited to present Ultra Payne as our Artist of the Year. You know, drag is such a beautiful, beautiful experience, and it's such a multifaceted art kind of presentation. When I think about drag and I think about the beauty in the makeup and what it takes to, all the time it takes, and the dedication to be so beautiful, and then I look at the attire and everything that you wear and how beautiful it is and how it really, you're like an art piece coming through, and it's just such a beautiful, beautiful thing. And I know that it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort, and not only is drag and are you beautiful, but you also have this great presence about you, and you can perform. I mean, that's another piece of it. It's just fabulous. So, you know, you get the triple, get the triple with you, and I'm just so appreciative to have you here with us today. So thank you so much. So come on up.
Ultra Payne, would you like to join us?
Yay! Look how beautiful you guys.
Hello, distinguished panel of judges. Thank you, guys, so much for everything you do for this community. Eureka and Humboldt at large is just such a welcoming and inclusive place, even with everything in the world going on right now, especially regarding drag itself. It's very, very nice to know that I am a part of a community that is so accepting and welcoming of people who are so different than the quote-unquote "norm." So I am just very, very happy to be able to be a part of the bigger picture and to spread my art to so many different people, because for the longest time, not a whole lot of people were watching, and now I have so many eyes on me, and I'm so grateful because, you know, it takes a lot of time to look this pretty, so I'm glad that people are seeing it. But yeah, just all in all, thank you, guys, so much. I really appreciate it.
We appreciate you. Oh, you guys, this is so exciting. And to carry on with the excitement, we now are having a presentation from the Eureka Chinatown Monument Project. So come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Robin Prasker with the Community Services Department, and we have been working with the Eureka Chinatown Project on multiple different projects. We helped with the renaming or the naming of Charlie Moon Way, but tonight, I am excited to present to you Sheri, who will be talking to you all about a new proposed project that we hope you will enjoy. So I'll pass it off.
Thank you, city council and public as well. I really feel like I should make more of an effort. Okay. All right. So again, my name is Sheri Wu. I'm with the Hapi Humboldt Asian Pacific Islanders in Solidarity and also representing the Eureka Chinatown Project tonight. And I have also in the audience here some of our other representatives of Hapi and ECP. And we'll talk about more of them, more about them in a little bit. So I just want to talk about, oh, maybe not yet. Okay. I will. Okay. So a little bit about what ECP is, if you're not aware of it already. On the website, it says, "The ECP is an initiative by community members in Hapi to honor the history and culture of the first Chinese people in Humboldt County." And that's all true. That is what ECP is about. But when I first kind of started learning more about this group and got involved with it, a bunch of us were talking. We said, you know, it just seems like about every 10 years in the newspapers, whatever, you know, our local newspapers would come up with the story, and the story goes like this. Hey, everybody, there was a Chinatown here, and in the 1880s, due to racism and scapegoating, they just kicked everybody out, and it's horrible, and we don't want to do that again. And that's kind of the story. And that would, like I said, that would happen every five or 10 years, you'd kind of see the story come up again. And when we talked about it, we said, you know, there's a lot more to this story. There is a beginning, a middle, and an end, and, well, maybe more not even at the end. Maybe this is going to even keep going. So that's kind of one of the reasons why we have this Chinatown Project, is to tell this story. But first, I want to say thank you to the City of Eureka, council members, the present ones, past ones, city staff has been so great, the businesses in the city have just really supported this project, and all the other organizations and just the residents and people of Eureka, they've just been really great. And next slide, we can, and the next couple of slides will tell you what are the different things that we've been supported as part of the Chinatown Project. The first one is there is a mural now. It's kind of on the backside of Savage Henry, if you know where that is. Chinatown was, the block itself was Fourth, Fifth, E and F, that block. So this is where this mural is located. It was part of the August 2021 Eureka Mural Arts Festival, and we can talk a long time about the symbology of this mural, but basically, and the part you see most prominently, is the fowl. It's a Mandarin duck, and this duck is, it mates for life. It's loyal. It stands for love. It stands for family, and that is part of what the story is about when Chinese people came here, and, you know, they came here to better their families and better their lives. The other part that I want to point out is the, kind of the rendering of the photograph there of the man, and that's Ben Chin, and he was one of the first Chinese to come back in the 1950s after the expulsion. Next one. Like I said already, the city and staff have been so supportive of this project, and as we were kicking off the idea of maybe we should have a plaque, maybe a mural, they said, hey, you know, we're redoing these wayfinding signs on Broadway. Would you like a panel or two? And we just went, yeah, of course, of course we would. And so right now, there's one panel on each of those two ones that are on Fifth Street. So that'd be like Fifth and F and Fifth and E. And one of them, like the slide says, it's remembering Eureka's Chinatown, and that one talks about the contributions that Chinese people made to the community before they were expelled. And again, you can see that photo of Ben Chin, so talking about the return and, again, the contribution to community. And then the other wayfinding sign is about the expulsion that happened in 1885. Next. So another part of the Chinatown Project has been the rename or the naming of Charlie Moon Way, and this is the kind of alley streetway that bisects that block. And again, you know, going back to those stories that we would hear every 10 years, you know, they'd often say something like, "And Charlie Moon was the only Chinese man left in Humboldt County." And that was, again, kind of the story. And that, again, is true partly, but there's more. You know, there were other Chinese people who were remaining in Humboldt County. And then, again, there's even more. So who was Charlie Moon? And what happened to him? He married a Chalula woman and was accepted into their culture. There are many, many Moon descendants today. And as we were kicking... There are many, many Moon descendants today. And as we were kicking around the idea, what do we, what should we name or rename this little alleyway? We said, we better talk to the Moon family, right? And they, they were supportive of this. It was just so great. And I feel like, I feel very humble in a way that they were wanting to claim their Chinese heritage, you know, along with their native heritage. It just kind of floors me. Next slide. So, you can actually see on the slide on the right-hand side, the Moon family is, some of them, like I said, there's many Moon descendants, but some of them attended the Lunar New Year Celebration. And you could see them kind of grouped on the left-hand side of that right photograph there. So, they were there. We had the ribbon cutting for the Charlie Moon Way at this Lunar New Year Celebration. And yeah, quick plug for the next one, May 6th, this coming up year. And I also wanted to say about the lion dancers, which you can see on the left-hand side. And so, what happened during the Lunar New Year Celebration is that the lion dancers would go to the different businesses and bless them. And the businesses give them the red envelope of Lyci. And I think it's cabbage. And they can, you know, watch the lion downstairs or the lion munch up the cabbage and throw it around. It's all very fun with the drumming. So, again, so many businesses supported this. And if you can go to the next slide, I want to shout out to these businesses. And I'm going to spend the time to recognize them. Redwood Retro, Lotus Studio, Fatsey Klein, Bayfront One, Humboldt Herbals, the Familia Cafe, and of course, our mothership, the Ink People, the Northern California Indian Development Council, Foot Logic, Eureka Books, A Taste of Bim, and of course, the Clark Historical Museum. Next slide. So, the Clark has just been an integral part of this project. And the former director told us this story about how she found this cup that was in their collection, that somebody had brought in and said, yeah, this thing has been in our family for years. I don't think we really should have it. We think it came from the Chinatown. And so, that kind of kicked off her interest in this story. And so, she's been a great help, along with professors up on campus. Want to talk about the Chinatown tours that we've been putting on for, I guess, like two years now. We kind of dovetail it in with Arts Alive, figuring that, well, people might want to come onto the Chinatown Tour and go have dinner and then go do Arts Alive, you know? So, kind of a package. And we've put on these tours about once a month. Those are the ones that are open to the public. And we've also done tours for people who just ask us. So, there's been any number now of high school groups and university groups. And the most recent one that I did was with some people that were coming for the offshore wind thing. And so, we gave them a little tour as well. Next. So, yeah, as you were forewarned, we do have a request. So, next slide. This is a map. They call them the Sanborn Maps. Those old, like 18, well, this one was 1880s. And you can actually see that they wrote Chinatown in there. But I want to also point out that there were farms that Chinese people grew a lot of the vegetables and the fresh produce for the community. And then also towards the waterfront on the left-hand side of that, where you can see the bay, there were warehouses there. And that night when they kicked everybody out, they said, well, you know, we could burn it. No, no, we don't want to burn it, but we'll put everybody on boats, take them to San Francisco, make them go to San Francisco. But the tide wasn't right. And so, they had to stay in these warehouses overnight until the tide was right. So, the tour, the Chinatown tour starts right now at the Clark Museum, kind of depending on the size of the, you know, the makeup of who the tour is. We'll either take them all the way around Chinatown or take them through the alley and then go down to the waterfront and, you know, just tell the story. The first and E monument site is outlined there. You can see. And next slide. So, that's what this corner looks like right now. If you're looking at the big photo, like if I'm looking at it towards my, I'm looking towards the building that has Las Bagels. And then like at my back on my right-hand side, that would be Dick Taylor. And then to my back would be Health Sport. So, it's that corner that we're talking about. We've talked to those businesses and they're supportive of having something, some kind of a monument there. And so, the question is, you know, well, what would maybe this monument look like? So, next slide. It might look something like this. This is a conceptual design. And spend a couple minutes on this. So, the squiggly lines are representative of a timeline. And so, if you start on the left-hand side, you could see these markers and their various sizes. These sizes are representative of the population of Chinese people in Humboldt County. And so, you can see on the left, you know, it starts out, there's some, there's, you know, get to be a little bit more. And then right at that first bend there, you see where it goes from a marker to like pretty flat. And that's representing the expulsion that happened. So, then you move on, you know, kind of, there's still rules on the books, city council, I mean, city rules that are discriminatory against Chinese people. But that starts to change and the rockets, the markers get a little bigger. And then they get a little bigger. And then maybe towards now, we're getting a little bit bigger yet. There is an arch that you can see. And then there's metal panels that are along the edges there. And there's, we plan to have a poem by Daryl Chin, who's sitting here, that we hope that people will read and kind of get where we're coming from. Yep, next. So, on these markers, I can't see it very well, but there are, let's see, hope. I can't really read it. China. Yeah, why don't you read them?
Hope, Gold Mountain, Chinatown, expulsion, resistance, resilience, return, community, hope.
Yes, thank you. So, you know, going back to those newspaper stories that used to happen, that told only part of the story, you know, they would tell the part where it says Chinatown and expulsion. That's it, right? But like we were saying, there's so much more to the story. And, you know, like we've talked about the return with Ben Chin. And now, as you move over towards the right-hand side, there's community and hope. And I think that's kind of where we're at right now because, you know, we're seeing how the community really is supporting this project and it's just so hopeful. And so, yeah, I guess that pulls us up to the next slide, the last slide, I'll add. So, this is our request. And that is to just please support this monument and this idea where we haven't started fundraising in earnest because we really wanted to get the formal, we hope, support from the city and the city council. But where if this happens, we think we might be able to kick it off and have a ribbon cutting, not this Lunar New Year, but maybe the next one in 2024. And that's kind of our story.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's great. And before you go, does council have any questions or comments? Councilmember Bauer?
I'm not speaking for myself, Sheri. Of course, I support this. I think it would be a fabulous addition to the city and a part of our history for what it's worth, you know, right or wrong. It's something that we need to talk about and then celebrate that we don't do stupid things like we did in the past, you know? So, I hope we can help out and get this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This has been the best meeting already. Thank you so, all these great things. Thank you.
We're super excited about it, actually.
I love the arch. Okay. Well, thank you and we'll get back with you. All right. No, let's see. So, let's move into public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item. Following the staff presentation of that item pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. So, do we have anyone here for public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing no one, we'll go over to Zoom.
Seeing none.
Will you double check?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to, I realized that three minutes is not a lot of time. So, I wanted to thank everybody who's involved with opening up that additional extreme shelter opportunity through the church. And then I was just saying, what is the theme that runs through that can be a cause for hope? Because it's a challenging time for many of us to learn how many people are dying outside and knowing full well that people don't necessarily want to hear about it, you know? But it is the reality. And so, the thing that I was thinking about, I've gone back and actually looked at some earlier city council meetings, starting, one of them was on 12/16/2014. And what I found in that meeting, it was when you were deciding whether to move ahead with the idea of the tiny home villages. And it was new and nobody much was doing it. There was such a cause for, there was courage expressed and there was hope. And I thought actually Kim gave one of the best, Kim Bergell gave one of the most moving descriptions of what we need to do throughout is to look at the people, not as people who can't, who choose to be out there because of drugs, but just do not assume that it's a choice because how difficult it is to, you know, to overcome it. And it would take me more than three minutes to read it, but I hope somebody will go back and see it. But the thing I wanted to move on to was, I appreciate these meetings. They're wonderful. But what I think we really need to do in order to move forward is something that, you know, Nezze Wade had mentioned, that we need this kind of collaborative approach where everybody brings their best wisdom and ideas in order to move forward. And the frustration I have, if I say something in three minutes and I don't get it quite right, then I can't answer it back if somebody says something that meant I wasn't clear and they didn't understand me. So, I would just ask that we really find some way to move forward on some of the value of that special meeting, which was so powerful, and do it because, for example, in terms of drug use, that's something I've become very more aware of, that, you know, one of the things about Justine Green, and I want to, I hope I get to say this before my three minutes is up, we know her as this person who died in, you know, the recycling situation. But what I've come to learn about her that I want to share is so beautiful because I heard from the person on the women's side that Justine would not come there if she was using drugs. She said she respected the place too much. And then I heard somebody who had worked with her down in Southern Humboldt and said the same thing. Justine wouldn't go to the shelter. It was Deborah Thomas who was friends with her and, you know, tried, you know, worked to help her. And she would be outside when she was drinking because she didn't want to bother people indoors. So, Deborah would just bring her in. So, I mean, I think there are so many stories like that. And I think one of the things I also think, you know, in three minutes, can't say, what I hope we would learn from all of this is what works and what doesn't. And I was a witness to the shower van, you know, before it was terminated or, you know, discontinued. And I went three out of four times in one month. And I hadn't been there very much because of the health issue. And here's what I found that was the most moving thing, is that the people there who were volunteers did it with, I would say, an expression of radiant love. In other words, they felt as [bleep] they were sharing, as the people who received it.
Thank you Suzanne, your time's up, hon. Sorry. We appreciate your comments. Thank you. Do you see anyone else?
Anyone else on Zoom for public comment? Seeing none.
Okay, seeing none. We'll bring it back to our public hearing. Public hearings are scheduled for, oh, so the Stokes General Plan Petition, senior planner Savage.
Pardon me, Mayor. I need to recuse myself for this public hearing.
Okay.
This is my, do I have to say why? This is my doctor.
Thank you. Excuse me, City Attorney Luna. If we have more than one council member who experiences the same doctor, do they all need to recuse themselves?
Whether or not they need to recuse themselves at all is a question that I have. Is there a financial interest? I don't want to have to go through the, through the Political Reform Act here on the fly. I wasn't aware that there was going to be any recusal, but I would say that just them being a doctor may not be enough. So, I don't know what the question is, I guess, if we can clarify the question. Do we have two recusals?
We have two council members that have Dr. Stokes's, they're the patients. So, do those people need to recuse themselves from this?
For the sole reason that Dr. Stokes is their doctor? Probably not. Okay. Yeah.
So, Councilmember Molten?
Fine with me. I bow to the expertise of our city attorney.
Great. Thank you. And you're good too? Thank you. Okay. It's all you.
Good evening, council members. Madam Mayor, before you this evening is Stokes General Plan Amendment Petition for 272 Harris Street. Approval of the petition will allow the applicant to apply for a general plan amendment and zone reclassification to change the land use designation and zoning for APN 1026112. Please keep in mind, approval of the petition by council is not a guarantee. The general plan amendment or zone reclassification will be approved. Here's a bird's eye view of the property, which is located one block southwest of the Henderson Center area. The parcel is located on Harris Street between William and D Streets. It is approximately 1.01 acres or 44,100 square feet and is currently improved with an approximately 13,750 square foot church, which is two stories plus a basement, two storage buildings at 1,430 square feet and 180 square feet, a parking lot, landscaping, and a cell tower designed to look like a bell tower. The church is no longer in use and is in the process of selling the property to the applicant. The applicant will propose to change the general plan land use designation from low-density residential, LDR, to neighborhood commercial, NC. The change in zoning from residential low R1 to Henderson Center. The applicant intends to use the property for multifamily housing, medical office space, specifically a rural healthcare facility and urgent care facility, and a spa. Under the current residential zoning and land use designations, none of the proposed uses are allowed at this time. The land use designation and zoning, which will ultimately be proposed, would allow for multifamily housing and both medical and commercial offices as well as personal services or a spa, which are all principally permitted uses as well as a number of other uses. The proposed change would match the land use designation and zoning to the northeast. To approve the general plan amendment petition request, council must find the amendment has the potential to serve the public interest. In this case, the proposed amendment and subsequent rezone have the potential to serve the public interest by allowing for a much denser development of housing and will repurpose a vacant church into a mixed-use development. In addition, as a church, the property is not generating property taxes as it is exempt. The proposed change will allow for property taxes to be collected. And in addition, the applicant proposes, the applicant's proposed new uses have the potential to generate some sales tax. Therefore, because the general plan amendment has the potential to serve the public interest, staff recommends that city council hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution of the city council of the City of Eureka finding- and adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Eureka, finding the general plan amendment petition is exempt from CEQA and approve the petition for the property located at 272 Harris Street, APN 10-261-12. And I have a suggested motion when you're, when you're ready.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? I can't see you, Councilmember Molton. Do you have questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll, um, or hearing none, we'll move to public, open the public hearing for public comment. Is anyone here to comment on this item?
Uh, yes. My name's Thaas Stewart.
Welcome.
I'm in 500 feet of the church. Now, for, oops, sorry. First of all, my big question is, what exact kind of open-door clinic is he planning on making it to be? Cause there is no statement that was posted from the Planning Commission giving any details, such as you just mentioned. Because basically, my point is, we happen to have three open-door clinics in Eureka already. So is it necessary to have another one? Now, if he's considering that as do, as a doctor's offices, it's not clear. Cause the three open-door clinics we already have. The first one is at 2350 Boone. The next one, 2412 Boone. Then the 2200 block of Tib Street, Tit Street. And then the next thing, I have no idea if the realtor gave Dr. Stokes the actual facts of the matter of the property the church is sitting on. I could just tell you, originally, the contractor, Dawn Grace, owned that property. That property was a valley, empty valley. Well, Glenn Nash is building or reconstructing. I guess he would dump greenery, wood, maybe a drill that was no longer working. He happened to have allowed people he knew or people in the neighborhood. It was before I moved in the neighborhood, of course. He'd allow them to put, dump their greenery and other utensils. For example, a couple, um, the Johnsons, Clary and Evelyn Johnson, that lived at 2917 D Street. They told me sometime within 20 years, they had taken a refrigerator, a freezer, a car tire and dumped in that valley. The Inner Simonis, Angelo and Dorothy Inner Simone had told me that they had dumped a washer and dryer, you know, another neighbor, a lawnmower. Well, I'm wondering if the property had really been tested. Considering with an old washer, I mean, an old refrigerator and freezer, we're talking about free-on the chemical that was in all of that. I have no idea if that was ever checked. I personally would say the Planning Commission in the first place have the church built there, they didn't inspect.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, council, Mayor. Um, I'm here. I'm Angie Dodd. I'm with North Point Consulting Group. And I represent, I'm the agent representing the applicant. I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any tonight.
Thank you. So after this comment, um, we can have you answer that question? Thank you.
Uh, hi there. Uh, I live in the neighborhood, pretty much right across the street from the proposed development. And I'm not, I'm not opposed to housing development, but I'm concerned about the business development in that location. Especially, it's redundant in a lot of ways. We have spas in the neighborhood already. There's one going in on E Street right now. Um, there's vacant and open storefronts in Henderson Center that could be used. And, uh, I'm also a little dubious of the claim that this will bring in property taxes. If it's going to be a nonprofit clinic, my understanding is they don't pay property taxes. That feels like a bait and switch. Um, my main concern though is quality of life. Uh, I'm a public employee. I do not make a lot of income. And I'm concerned about traffic on the streets, parking on the streets, what that's going to be like with a long-term construction project and with multiple businesses on one site. Uh, I've lived on busy streets before and they're not great. I have several neighbors who couldn't be here tonight who also share these concerns. Um, we live right across the street. This is going to have a big impact on us. And if we have to move, given the cost of housing in Eureka, we won't be able to stay. Uh, again, housing in the neighborhood, great, businesses, it doesn't feel like the right fit. So, thank you.
Thank you. And would you be willing to come up and address the two questions that Stewart had? So one of them, I believe, was, um, what type of clinic? Uh, and then the second question was, are the people aware of what was dumped in the landfill? Is that correct, Ms. Stewart?
Yeah. So I'm not, I can't speak to, uh, a landfill. I'm not sure. I mean, that, we'd have to do research on that. The type of clinic, it's a, um, so there's a medical spa, so not a typical aesthetic spa. It requires doctor, laser, um, aesthetics, medical spa. And then on the first floor, which is the basement, um, Dr. Stokes is looking at a rural health clinic and an urgent care clinic. So not a nonprofit, not associated with open door. And it's my understanding tonight that we're just looking for a petition. It's just approval to process an application. So a lot of the questions tonight will be flushed out as we see what's suitable for the site, what meets city ordinance and city code. Um, in terms of apartments, probably, you know, 12 to 24 apartments. Um, Dr. Stokes is looking for, to support maybe single mothers, folks that could possibly work at the clinic or the medical spa. Um, again, those are things that will be flushed out and described in the project description. A lot more detail will be given at that time when it comes to Planning Commission. And then it will come before city council again. So in terms of details and project descriptions, those will come forward at a later date.
Thank you so much for clarification.
Any other questions?
Not that I'm aware of in the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Um, does anyone else in the public or out here like to speak? Yes?
Thank you. My main concern also as a resident of that neighborhood across the street is that we've been talking about housing off and on all night and how needed housing is here. How much homelessness is an issue and low-cost housing is an issue. And it seems inappropriate to turn a property that is currently zoned for residential into business zone. Um, when, like others have said, there are already many vacant business properties just across the street from there and throughout Eureka and surrounding areas. We don't need more business properties. We have plenty to be filled. We do need more housing properties. We need more housing in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you see anybody on Zoom? Looks like Althea.
I do. Althea?
Uh, yes, hello. So I also had the knee-jerk reaction of how could you possibly be considering uh, changing the zoning from residential to commercial when I first saw it? And then I read about it and realized it was going from low-density, you know, single-family home only zoning to a zoning that would allow for apartments, you know, multifamily, um, you know, multi-unit building. So I actually was like, oh, okay, um, this is actually a good thing that it's, that it's changing. It's, it's going to house more people as a neighborhood commercial zoning than it would have in his, in its residential zoning. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, um, I don't know how the confusion happened between urgent care and open door. There, you know, those are different things. But, um, there are no doctor's offices on the west side of Eureka, except for the VA clinic. Um, basically, all the doctor's offices in Eureka are concentrated out there around Harrison. Um, you know, between Harris and, um, oh, I don't know, what if, Myrtle, let's say. Um, so I actually think it's a great thing to have a doctor's office, especially if it's an urgent care, closer to Henderson Center, you know, um, that would cut my time commuting, you know, trying to get to a doctor's office in half. Uh, for most people on the west side, that would, that would reduce their travel time to the doctor by, by half. Um, and Henderson Center is basically the most transit-friendly, uh, transit service neighborhood in the city other than H and Third. Um, so I think this is actually a really good spot for development of residential because, um, it's so well-served by transit. Thank you.
Thanks, Althea.
Robert?
Hello? I just wanted to echo previous comments and say, you know, as a resident in that area, I also agree that turning, you know, unused land like that, empty church, something that can't really be used for housing. And I, I think that kind of zoning is great, commercial and, you know, mixed use with, with houses and places for people to live. That's only a good thing for Eureka. We need, we need more places like that. We need more high-density housing. We need more mixed-use areas where there's businesses and livable space in the same area. The more we make Eureka a pedestrian, pedestrian-friendly, you know, business-friendly, low-cost housing area, the easier it'll be for us to attract new residents, the easier it'll be for us to attract new, you know, healthcare professionals, which we desperately need out here. These kinds of things can only help us. Uh, having more places where people can get healthcare can only help us, you know? It's hard enough right now to find a primary care doctor. It's hard enough right now to go and see a doctor when something's wrong with you. Um, that a lot of people just don't do it, or they try to and they can't. Even something small, it's urgent. You know, you go to the urgent care over by the hospital at noon or before noon. You might be waiting until lunch and they close. You have to come back. There's a long line stretching outside of the building. So having more of these doctors that want to run urgent cares, rural health clinics, come out here and set up shop around the city, that's, that's only a positive thing. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you.
Ale, Alicia?
Hi, um, I am also a resident that lives across from the church. I am all for pro-housing and adding businesses to the community. But having that many things in that building is too much. That's, I'm, I'm worried about the impact that we're going to have for traffic and parking. I know that there is parking on the building, but I'm, I'm not seeing that use of the building as beneficial or, or bringing in people for housing. If they're, I just don't feel that the building is big enough to support all of that or the space in general. So I'm just concerned with the plans that are being presented for it at this time.
Thank you, Alicia. Do you see anyone else?
I see no one else.
Great. Seeing no one, we will close the public, or the public hearing. And we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. Um, and just for clarification, the building will change, is, is proposed to change. Please.
So the church will be remodeled for the urgent care, the rural health clinic and the medical spa. And then there will be additional buildings added to the site for residential.
Thank you. And I, I wanted to read, um, some of y'all may know that, um, you know, when, when you look at the agenda, if you, if you go to the city's website and click on the agenda, you can get the further supporting documents. Um, but I just wanted to read for the public a little bit about this agenda item, just so it's really clear what we're voting on tonight. And that is, this is a petition. Uh, petition approval is not a tacit implied or guarantee of approval of the general plan amendment, nor does it bind the current or future city council with regard to a decision on the proposed general plan amendment. If the council approves the general plan amendment petition, the applicant will apply and staff will proceed with processing the aforementioned amendment and zone reclassification and will bring the issue before the city planning commission and city council at notice public hearings. So this is really just one small part of a process in which, um, really the public will have access to input it in further stages. With that, I do want to say I'm, I live in neighborhood commercially zoned area off of Wabash. I love it. It's my favorite zoning classification. Um, because, you know, as someone who lives in that, um, you know, in an area with that type of zoning, I do find that I, you know, and, and not to say everyone should be like me, but, you know, that there's something very beneficial to neighborhoods to have businesses and professionals in the neighborhoods. Um, also, um, almost weekly, I, I attend a meeting where, um, where it's the lack of medical professionals and opportunity for medical services is a critical issue in our community. So with that, I do, um, support this. Happy to, I don't want to cut other council members off, but I'm happy to, um, make a motion to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Eureka, finding the general plan amendment petition is exempt from CEQA and approve the petition for the property located at 272 Harris Street, APN, uh, 010-261-012.
A second.
Any further comments? Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Uh, yeah, when I was reading through this, I thought, when I saw the potential for an urgent care, we are very underserved. So that was something, you know, for me too. I thought, uh, the potential of that, we have one urgent care and they close at four. If they haven't met their threshold, which they frequently meet their threshold during high seasons of illness by noon or one, and they're closed and that's it. And so then it's to the emergency room, um, where you wait for hours and hours and hours. And so, um, anyway, so I, you know, we are very underserved here. That's definitely a worry and a concern. Um, you know, there's a, an enormous need. Um, so I, you know, also am, um, you know, excited about looking at this and getting, you know, more information and, um, the potential of that for our community.
Councilmember Bauer?
Uh, I appreciate that. I mean, coming from a household that, you know, works in our, uh, medical services and, and emergency room, is heavily impacted by people that come in for sprains and things that could be handled by urgent care. And so it benefits us on a multitude of levels, right? Our, our ability to see doctors, the ability to have one closer to home. That's all, that's all important to the city. And the fact that it's mixed use is really cool, that we actually are going to have not just a big building, you know, on a lot. You know, people, people living there and people working there. And so all those things are, are great. I'm glad we're exploring it. It's just a petition, you know, so we have a long ways to go. But I think it's a, a move in the right direction for this parcel that's just currently sitting there and not providing any value for our citizens. So I look forward to seeing it in the future.
Councilmember Molton, did you have any comments?
I don't have any comments at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, I, I have just one comment. I too am excited about an opportunity to have something medical on that side of town. Um, you know, it's very true that most of the medical offices, all of those things are over near the hospital, really, and over near, um, you know, Safeway and that. And so to have an opportunity, a potential opportunity, nothing's happening yet. But to have that potential opportunity, I think is going to be really beneficial for our city. And certainly we are lacking in professionals. So to have an opportunity to bring more, um, services to our community, I think is going to be. And I love the idea of having it so close to the bus route, right? We just honored our transit people tonight. So with that, if there are no further comments, please vote.
Councilmember Molton?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Okay.
Councilmember Fernandez is absent.
Okay, we'll now move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be
separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And I wasn't aware of anything being polled. Is, did anyone? No? Okay. Well, with that, if we could get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Moulton?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries. Councilmember Fernandez absent.
Thank you. Um, does anyone have any legislative action correspondence? Uh, councilmember Bauer?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, there's, this is the legislative season and there's literally hundreds of bills, um, being discussed, you know, in committees. And I have a whole list of them, but I think, um, a couple of important ones that I'd like for us to consider to support. Um, I'll start with Senate Bill 363. It's a real time behavioral health and what it essentially does is, um, it'll create a database of all the behavioral health facilities in the state. And so if a facility is full, then somebody can go onto the database, a, a medical professional and find a place for somebody that's experiencing a, um, a, a, a mental health crisis. So it's pretty straightforward. I think, you know, HIPAA rules are all safe there, but I think it, it would help, like with our city, we face this pretty, pretty often, um, where we're full and we don't have a place for somebody to go. Um, so I'd like to see us support that. Um, I can read the whole bill, but you know, um, I think it's a really good thing for us and we can maybe bring it back for approval, you know, drop the, a letter of support and talk about it. Yeah. Okay.
Great. So it looks like we have consensus for that?
Awesome. And then, um, one other one that is, is about a year away, but it's going to be one that affects most, all cities in California is that the California Business Roundtable has the Taxpayer Protection Act where, um, it would essentially make it impossible for a city to, um, have a measure that increases the sales tax that provides services like we've done in our city, right? And I think it even goes retroactive to 2016. So if you pass something, maybe it's not that far, but if you pass something in the recent past that is a 2002 years? Okay. So it makes it really difficult for a local, you know, um, local city or cities to, to raise taxes, you know, which none of us like to do, but provides things like roads and all these great things that we're currently benefiting from right now. Thank you, you know, citizens. We need to fight this measure. Um, the, the Business Roundtable is going to pour tens of millions of dollars into passing this. So I'd like to do a, a letter opposing this initiative, um, in the near future because we'll all need to, all cities are going to need to really, really, um, get together and and fight something like this.
Looks like we have in, so is this something then, City Attorney Luna, that you would bring us back, bring back?
Yes, uh, I think at least two of these will be ready for the next meeting, uh, possibly three. So one from last time.
I was going to ask about that. Great.
Yes.
Okay.
And there's a bunch of others, but I think we can talk about them next meeting and think we have time.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any legislative, legislative action? Okay. So we'll move on to our ordinances. Pro housing designation program application. This is, uh, Senior Planner Lisa Savage.
Again, Madam Mayor. Before you this evening, um, I'm excited to bring the pro housing designation program application. The city is applying for pro housing designation under the pro housing designation program, which is administered by the Department of Housing and Community Development pursuant to Government Code Section 65589.9. The program creates incentives, incentives for jurisdictions that are compliant with state housing element requirements and have enacted local policies supportive of housing development. These incentives will take the form of additional points or other preference, or other preference in scoring of HCD's competitive applications for housing and infrastructure programs, such as the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities AHSC Grant Program. The city is working with Link Housing to submit a second AHSC grant, application for Myrtle and Sunny, Eighth and G, and Sixth and M housing sites. And having the pro housing designation will increase the award points possible for this and other future applications. So how are applications graded? California Code Regulation Section 6606 includes a list of qualifying pro housing Each worth between one and three points across four categories, favorable zoning and land use, acceleration of housing production timeframes, reduction of construction and development costs, and provision of financial subsidies. A minimum of 30 points are required to qualify for the pro housing designation, with at least one point required in each of the four categories. To gain points for each housing policy, the city must, the city must submit documentary evidence that it has either enacted the policy or the policy is proposed and will enact the policy within two years of the date of the application. The application staff plans to submit contains 38 points. All but three of the city policies are already enacted. So two I on the application, uh, worth one point, I believe. During the next zoning code update in June 2023, the time staff is allocated to approve, to approve permits for ADUs and junior ADUs will be reduced from 60 days to 45 days. Three D, also worth one point, I believe. By June 2023, staff will create a brochure which promotes innovative housing types such as manufactured homes and tiny houses on wheels. So just to be clear, that's in our code, those things are already allowed, but part of, um, what you need to get the point is to have a brochure that promotes those types of housing. Finally, four B, which is worth two points, the housing department will create a low interest revolving loan fund for ADUs and junior ADUs by January of 2024. And, uh, that brings us to our total of 38 points. Staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Eureka authorizing application to and participation in the pro housing designation program. And I can answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Costellano?
Just a quick question. Um, and this is our application for this, for pro, pro housing designation. Is it fairly certain that since we meet all the criteria, that the application will be successful or, or is there, uh, some level of uncertainty about that?
Uh, we have no way of completely knowing, but I feel fairly confident that what we've put in, you know, is, is clear and we did go over it with, um, with one of the people, you know, from, um, the, um, HCD before we brought it to council. And they felt like what we had fit in the categories did fit. So I feel confident.
That's awesome. And then I guess just a, this is more for my own random interest. I'll get into how excited I am about this later, but I was just curious, um, at the bottom of the different ca- categories that we can apply for, there are several about project proposal enhancement factors. And these are just, you know, this is part of the listing of all of the different ways we could be pro housing. And, you know, there's some exciting things I had never thought of. They're not necessarily part of our application, but, um, will there be opportunities to, you know, kind of continue to develop more pro housing pathways in the future, should we want to?
Is that a question? I, I believe so, but the, um, that would be up to the senior planners in the future.
You act like you're leaving.
Not the senior planner, sorry, the principal planner.
Senior planner savage. But yes.
Sorry.
We definitely have other plans and I, this is something that we've talked, you know, we've been looking at the Housing Trust Fund, um, whether or not that gives us more points, um, I'm not sure, but definitely we'll be looking at other, um, opportunities for, um, points for pro housing.
Councilmember Bauer?
Uh, and maybe you, you said this already, but the pro housing designation, I guess I have two questions about it. Um, it improve, like, it, it's rhetorical question, but it improves our ability to get funding, I would imagine, for, for housing developments, correct?
That's correct.
That's the number one thing. Um, oh God, and I forgot what my second point was there. Um, that's what happens, just, phew. Um, but it's great to see that we only needed three, essentially three things to, to get there. Shows that we're already pro housing, which is great. Um, oh, my other question was, as far as once we achieve the designation, does it affect our, our land use decision making? So do they put restrictions on us in, in some fashion? I'm just thinking like our, our sovereign rights as a city, it's all good?
Everything that is in the application is already in the zoning code already.
So we're good to go. Okay.
Uh, I'd just add that, you know, another benefit that's kind of ancillary is that, you know, by doing these things, you'll become more developer friendly. And so hopefully that provides more incentive for developers to come in here and knowing that it's a lot more efficient, a lot more cost effective for them to be in our communities to develop. And so I think that pro housing designation will help that as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I, I can't see on Zoom. Okay, great. Okay. So seeing no further questions, we'll open this item for public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that came to comment on this item? Let's see, Joey?
Joey Shields?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Um, I just want to express my utmost support for, uh, the pro housing application, um, especially, uh, Lisa Savage and, and the team at the city of Eureka for putting it together. Um, in our experience at Link Housing, whoa, I don't know what's happening, I'm doing a time warp here. But, um, all I'd say is, um, from our perspective at Link, I know, um, we've clearly seen the city and its staff, um, and its, uh, public officials be incredibly supportive of, of housing, um, and affordable housing communities historically. Um, but I, as Lisa was saying, um, whoop, the time warp again, um, this application will help, uh, really boost our competitiveness for the AHSC application. Um, we're going to get two, uh, extra points because, uh, we would be considered pro housing. Um, so just very grateful for the city's, um, attention and willingness to kind of move mountains to get this application submitted. So very grateful and I hope you would, uh, support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey.
Uh, yeah, I am supportive of us becoming, uh, a pro housing city and I just hope that we can live up to that, um, and, you know, really actually become pro housing, not just say that we're pro housing. Thank you.
Thanks, Althea. See anyone else?
I see no one else.
So seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for comments and a vote.
I don't have, I go first too often. Um, well, yeah, thank you so much, um, Senior Planner Savage. This is, I'm so excited about this. Um, yeah, this comes up often, how it will really benefit the city's, uh, forward motion into actually enacting housing and, and just increase capacity for people who are building housing here to also get funding for the housing, which is so critical. Um, I just want to say, um, there are some things in, you know, reading over it that I was like, ooh, like a work, workforce housing opportunity zone? That sounds really cool. Not, anyway, just some fun ideas I think we could explore in the future, such as policies that target lower opportunity areas. I would love to just do some more thinking about that as well as, um, conserving housing stock that is affordable to low income households. Um, so anyway, I, I'm super, super, super duper excited about this. And also, you know, I think it's a really great, the analysis is, I think is a really great resource for people who are thinking about building housing, because it really shows different ways in which the city has facilitated making housing more possible. So hopefully other people will find it as a res, uh, useful as a resource too.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
I'd like to make a motion, um, to adopt the resolution of the city council of the city of Eureka authorizing application to and particip- participation in the pro housing designation program.
I'd like to second that.
Great. So we have a motion and second. Are there further comments? Okay, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, Councilmember Fernandez absent, motion carries.
We'll assume I voted yes, since I seconded.
Thank you.
Such exciting things happening in our city. Okay, uh, Bill Number 1026 DS CS, Chapter 150 for Efficiency Dwelling Units. Principal Planner Kenyon?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So let me just pull up my presentation. So an efficiency dwelling unit is basically a one-room studio with independent living facilities for one or more people, including for living, sleeping, eating, and sanitation. Um, the ordinance before you, um, council amended the Eureka Municipal Code, Chapter 150 in 2020 to reduce, um, minimum requirements for efficiency dwelling units. Um, and that was inadvertently omitted during the 2022 building code update. So staff is recommending we add back in those previously adopted provisions. Um, so the California Building Code includes minimum standards for efficiency dwelling units, that they must be at least 190 square feet, um, in floor area. Uh, they have a separate closet, a kitchen with a sink, cooking appliance, refrigerator, and 30 inch wide workspace, and a bathroom with a toilet, sink, and tub or shower. Um, so we have to stick to these minimum requirements unless we modify them by local ordinance, which is allowed by this other provision of state code, health and safety code. Um, so that's what this ordinance would do. Uh, it would reduce the minimum square footage to 150 square feet, which is what the health and safety code allows as a minimum. Um, and it would reduce some of the kitchen and bathroom facility requirements. Um, so how does this benefit housing? It supports motel conversions, um, for small hotel, motel, hotel units, um, to become dwelling units, um, long-term residential units. Uh, maybe it would support the conversion of somebody's really small garage or outdoor shed into an accessory dwelling unit, um, or an RV into, uh, an accessory dwelling unit, a tiny house on wheels. Um, also, our mixed use zones don't have a limit on the number of dwelling units per lot. It's the limit set by floor area ratio. So the smaller the units, the more you can get in, um, on each mixed use lot. Um, and also, uh, in Eureka, at least this was true in- And also, in Eureka, at least this was true in 2019 when our housing element was adopted, it was found that units 500 square feet or less in size are affordable by design to low income households, which means that they're just naturally affordable because of their size, and they don't need, you know, a deed restriction or some other mechanism to make them affordable. And also, one to two person households are growing demographic that might find these small units appealing. And where are efficiency units allowed? Anywhere housing is allowed, and any residential unit can be an efficiency unit. So an accessory dwelling unit, an apartment above, you know, commercial development, even your primary residence can be tiny. And just since I have everybody's attention, I just wanted to highlight that we have some zoning incentives for small units, 500 square feet and less in size. They're exempt from off street parking requirements. They're exempt from design review, and they're eligible for infill incentives, which allows additional, you know, you get out of certain zoning standards if you apply for infill incentives. So the recommendation tonight is to waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce Bill Number 1026-CS, an ordinance of the City of Eureka, amending Eureka Municipal Code Title 15, Chapter 150, Section 150.016, pertaining to efficiency dwelling units.
Do we have any questions from council? Councilmember Contras Deloche.
I was just wondering if I could, that one slide, peek at that one slide one more time that showed what the list used to be, and then it had them lined out, so that it could be, you just went through it so quick. Is that too much of a paint? You could show me later.
Yeah, I accidentally just shut out my PowerPoint, so.
Big deal. I just, I just wanted to know. And it's not an urgent thing. I can see it later. Thanks.
Councilmember Castellano.
I was just curious if we, if there are people who are interested in building these or adapting current buildings into these currently in Eureka, is there current interest?
There's definitely a ton of interest in motel hotel conversions into small dwelling units.
Great.
Including for students.
And then relatedly, I know Project Home Key has identified this type of unit. Are there possibly future Home Key applications that might make use of something like this?
Yes, definitely. I mean, not only this, but I believe the other one is called congregate dwelling units, where they're more kind of dormitory style. That's, I believe, 120 square feet. But yeah, both of those would be eligible for a Home Key type of situation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll open this up for public comment. Is there anyone here from the public who's came to comment on this item? Philip?
Hello, thank you. Full support. Yes, please. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Althea?
Also, in full support, I even have a building in mind, which I'm currently drawing, you know, square footage boxes on. I will probably email you all later.
Thank you.
Seeing none.
Okay, seeing no other public commenters, we'll bring it back to council for final comments and a motion. Councilmember Castellano.
I will, I support this. Full support, as Philip said. And make the motion to waive full reading and read by title only, and introduce Bill Number 1026-CS, an ordinance of the City of Eureka, amending Eureka Municipal Code Title 15, Chapter 150, Section 150.016, pertaining to efficiency dwelling units.
I'll second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Please vote.
Councilmember Moulton?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote. Councilmember Fernandez absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. And then we are bringing back for a second reading, the ordinance on decorum. City Attorney Luna?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is the second reading. This was introduced at our last meeting. And as I said at that last meeting, this is an update to our decorum ordinance to bring our current ordinance in line with SB 1100 that was passed last year, and in line with our new meeting process guide that was adopted a couple of meetings back. So nothing has changed since introduction. I will answer any questions if you have any, but otherwise, tonight it is time for adoption.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Great. Seeing none, we'll open it to public comment. Is there anyone here that'd like to comment on this item? Althea, your hand is up.
Oops, sorry, forgot to put it down.
Thank you. So seeing no one in public comment, we'll turn it to council for a motion. Councilmember Bauer?
I'll make the motion to waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt Bill Number 1014-CS, an ordinance of the City of Eureka, replacing in its entirety decorum, Section 30.13 of Title III, Chapter 30.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Thank you, City Attorney.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Please vote.
Councilmember Moulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez absent. Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Great. So our next item is the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission, REDEC delegate. So what we're going to be doing is appointing a council member, or we're appointing Councilmember Fernandez as the primary delegate to REDEC, and select a council member as the alternate. So. Do we have anybody willing to be, or do we have anyone willing to nominate someone to be the alternate?
I've got like 30 committees I'm on, but I'm happy to be an alternate. I'll do it.
Thank you, Councilmember Bauer.
I'll nominate Councilmember Bauer to be the alternate.
I like it. So, so should we, is it just a motion to appoint Councilmember Fernandez as the primary delegate, and Councilmember Bauer as the alternate? Is it that simple? Is that simple? So I just gave someone a motion? No, I can't make the motion.
Do we need public comment on this? Always a good idea.
So is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for a motion and a vote.
I'll make a motion to appoint Councilmember Fernandez as the primary delegate to REDEC, and select Councilmember Bauer as the alternate to the REDEC board.
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been seconded. Our motion is seconded. Please vote.
Councilmember Moulton?
Aye. We didn't just volunteer Mario for something, did we?
Councilmember Fernandez absent. Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Great. Does anyone have any future agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to City Manager, of course. City Manager Slattery?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're going to have Director Millar give an update on where we're at with VDUs, vacation dwelling units. As council knows, we've been working with a consultant to keep track of the number of units, who goes in, who goes out, so that we can get them into compliance. There's a certain number that are in compliance, and there's a certain number that's not. We're going through the process of notifying those folks, letting them know how to get into compliance, and working with them so that they are in compliance. And so Director Millar will give us a presentation on where we're at with that. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the introduction, Miles. So as Miles stated, or City Manager Slattery stated, tonight's presentation is about vacation dwelling units, otherwise known as a VDU, or short term rental. This presentation has multiple sections. We'll talk about how we monitor VDU activity, what we're doing to enforce compliance. I've produced some graphs and charts about VDU activity. We'll talk about revenue generated from these permits, and then go over the potential to create a housing trust fund. So to begin, host compliance is a vendor that we use to identify vacation dwelling units within the city limits. They offer a number of different services, including address identification. So the software is constantly going through multiple booking sites, and tracking activity on those sites. We provide them with a list of permit holders, and they cross reference that data with the activity from these websites to tell us which listings are compliant versus which are not. They also track and archive activity from different listings. That includes number of stays, the rents advertised on these sites, as well as some other data. And then just recently, we released a new webpage that it's actually separate from host compliance, but it works with the program. This website allows VDU operators to report their TOT or their rents, and to also make TOT payments. We've had some issues with the software products. There's a lot of duplicate entries, meaning that if someone lists on Airbnb and VRBO, and they put down their address in two different ways, let's say they put Second Street as a number, and then on another site they spell out Second Street, that will show up twice. So I have to kind of go through and eliminate those listings, so that I get to the correct number. It also captures commercial activities. A lot of hotels will utilize Airbnb and VRBO. Those have nothing to do with VDU permits. And then not all addresses can be identified with the software. So enforcement. So what we've done is we've created a letter template, and this letter template will populate total taxes owed per listing. And we're going to work in batches. So we're going to, we've started with 15 operators that are not compliant. And by simply going into the software product and selecting these operators, we can initiate a letter to the listing operator, or to the property owner. When they receive the letter, they are required to contact the city within 30 days. They have 30 days to pay back taxes, and they do have the option of setting up a payment plan. And then they have six months to complete the permitting process. If they don't respond to the first letter, we will send a second. And then if they fail to respond altogether, we do have the option of recording a tax lien on the property. So using the data from this website, I've come up with a few graphs to kind of describe the environment. So first off, based on the data, I've seen activity from 49 compliant operators, and 53 noncompliant operators. And this is activity within residential zone districts. It's not activity that's along Broadway, or within the coastal zone. These operators are utilizing different housing types. So there are 55 operators that are using single family residences. 30 are using what is called an ADU, or additional dwelling unit. And then 17 are using an apartment or a condo. When I compare that data with housing units in the City of Eureka, and this data is coming from our housing element, you can see that less than 1% of the housing stock is being used for VDU operations. If you look at this other category, that's where I put ADUs. I don't know if that's appropriate. The percent of total seems kind of high. So I do, I'm a little skeptical of that number, but I think we should focus on the bottom line, which is about 0.8% of our housing stock has been utilized for VDUs. Last posting date. So this is kind of the best data point to track activity by listing. This bar chart shows you who's been active in the last seven days on the left, and then on the right, there are a few listings that haven't shown any activity in over a year. So in the last 30 days, we've seen 57 operators advertising their listing. In the last 60 days, 87 operators. And then going back 365 days, about 99 operators. So if you have a VDU permit, you have to submit TOT tax returns. Currently, we have 67 permits. Just because you have a permit doesn't mean you have to operate a VDU. So even though we have 67, we might not have 67 operating. In 2022, rent revenue from VDUs exceeded 1.1 million. And the TOT generated from that revenue, or rent revenue, was about 114,000. This represents about 3.4% of total TOT generated in 2022. There's potential for more TOT revenue, assuming that we added 53 more permits from these noncompliant operators. I think on the low end, we would expect about 142,000 in annual revenue, and on the high end, about 229,000. You know, this is, wouldn't be a windfall to the city, but I do think it opens up an opportunity for us. And that opportunity is setting up a housing trust fund. So a housing trust fund is essentially a pot of money that is dedicated to encourage the development of housing. You can use the trust fund to provide construction loans. You can set up special financing loans. You can fund predevelopment costs, acquisition of housing, as well as rehab. What's required is that you have a dedicated source of funding, such as TOT from VDU permits. You have to contribute an average of $100,000 per year, and you have to seed the fund with half a million dollars. As you saw in my previous slides, we've identified a source of funding from the VDU permits. In 2022, we showed that we could gross at least 100,000 per year. And then by utilizing some ARPA monies, we would have the ability to fund that initial seed money, or we would be able to seed the half a million dollars. There are guidelines for these funds. There are guidelines for these funds. 30% has to be dedicated to extremely low-income households, 50% to lower-income households, and 20% to moderate-income households. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Let's see. I, I know this isn't really an item for detailed discussion, so I'm not gonna go into too much here, but I'm just curious, why not in the coastal, or why hasn't there been movement in the coastal zone about vacation VDU's?
I would need the assistance of a planner, but it's, the rules are different because of how, or the area is not the same as the inland side. So I don't think it would be fair to compare operators within the coastal zone to operators outside because they play by different rules. I'm wondering if I could, yeah, borrow somebody?
Yeah, Lane's analysis was just looking at the inland residential zones, but we plan, we are tracking compliance citywide and it's different, but similar. In the coastal zone, you need your Vacation Dwelling Unit permit and have a business license and stuff like that. So we will be eventually getting to that and making sure that they're in compliance as well. But we thought it was best to start with the center of the city where you have all the residential zones and it's the biggest impact on housing.
Thank you. And then why are you skeptical about the ADUs percentage?
I find that number to be kind of low. I mean, it could be correct, but I don't know if that's the right place to put the ADUs. I don't, I think today, we do consider an ADU as other, but when the Housing Element was created, I don't know what that category represented, so.
Wouldn't that VDU, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be asking questions, but wouldn't that include the single-room things too? Like if you just had a room in your house? The other, under VDU operators, if you just had a room, wouldn't that classify under that? No?
I'm not sure. I didn't prepare the Housing Element.
Councilmember Castellano?
And then, are we just doing questions or both right now?
We are just doing, well, you can do both.
This is just a City Manager Report.
So, very excited about Housing Trust Fund. I also think it would be worth considering how the, how the City of Eureka Housing Trust Fund might interface with the Regional Housing Trust Fund and what the benefits of having, one, both, either, and, you know, clearly that's not something to parse out here. Either way, I'm super excited about it. And, you know, I think this is, yeah, thank you for bringing this analysis forward and for also really starting us thinking about implementing a Housing Trust Fund.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I'm excited about that too. The Housing Trust Fund's a great idea. I actually am surprised that the VDU's are under a percent. I felt, for some reason, I thought there'd be a couple percent. I don't know. I'm pleasantly surprised, but I'm also wondering, you know, in the future, what kind of cap, I know we can't probably discuss that particular issue, but where are we gonna level off our VDU's? Are we gonna, at some point, we're at the figure that out, right? I think that's important for housing. It's one thing to have a Housing Trust Fund, but if we're turning houses into VDU's, it's kind of negates the whole purpose of it. So just thinking out loud about that. But yeah, the Housing Trust Fund's great and it's great to know what we've got out there and I hope we get the non-compliant people to step up and join the, join the compliant group. Thanks.
So to your other point, though, we, the city has data going back to six years, I think? So six years. And based on that data, the fluctuation hasn't been great at all. And as Director Millar stated, you know, you can have a lot of them permitted and they may not necessarily be operating for months, or even a year or two. But as far as the number that are advertising and stuff, it, it hasn't gone, you know, it had any peaks or valleys. It's been pretty consistent about the number of operators in the city.
Councilmember Conchera Stiloch?
Yeah, actually, I have a few questions. I was just curious, how do you know what the back taxes are for someone who hasn't been in compliance? How would you track that accurately?
I mean, this is, it's not a perfect science, but there are requirements from the listing sites, like such as, not everyone can comment or leave a rating on a listing. You have to actually book the listing to leave a rating. So if on the listing, I can see how much it costs per night and the total number of, or the minimum number of days you have to book it for, and then the number of comments, you can get a pretty good number that way. And it's up to the operator to prove that that number is incorrect. So it's not up to the city to say that that is exact. It's up to the operator to prove that it's a number different from what is estimated.
And you guys are, you guys are trying to compile the calculation based off of?
The software program itself is doing all the math.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I had, can I ask a follow-up? Okay, so then I have a question about the, the Host Compliance. Well, actually, let me ask this first. So you said these numbers are only including outside? Presently, you guys are just looking at the ones outside the coastal zone? And we're not looking at the ones inside coastal zone?
No, the software is track, in fact, the software is tracking listings that might be right outside of city limits. So they, they're getting more data than what we actually need. They can only be so exact and in some cases, they might not have an address, so they might be making a guesstimate essentially of, if that property is even in Eureka.
Okay. And does this track things like, I don't know if somebody had mentioned this, when people are renting like a single bedroom or, you know, that, that's on their address? Because I know that exists, so, I mean, how does that, is it tracking that as well?
It tries to gather, whether it's a single bedroom or if it's an entire house.
Does that make any difference?
Not from a TOT perspective. Rent is defined as, you know, someone paying you for a short-term accommodation.
Can I get into the numbers of this? I'm just curious, like the cost to the city for working on compliance? And so I was wondering about the, the Host Compliance, that's a subscription, I'm guessing? I was just wondering about the cost of that, the cost of letters and outreach, the cost of staff time. And so I was just wondering what the overall cost to the city is to try to kind of work on this compliance issue.
So I don't know the exact cost of Host Compliance. I believe it's roughly 10,000 to 15,000 per year. And I would say that that, if you tried to mimic the software by utilizing staff, that you, the cost would quickly exceed what we would generate in revenue from these VDU's. And in fact, any sort of enforcement activity beyond sending letters out could easily reduce the net revenue by 50% or more.
That's kind of what I was wondering. I guess that's kind of what I was kind of trailing around is that, you know, it's easy for us to kind of look at this, like revenue generated. But I was just kind of wondering what the overall cost is going to be to the city as far as, you know, like you said, you, the software isn't perfect, so you need to spend time kind of picking through it a little bit. And then there's the time to, you know, letters, reach out, and then, you know, maybe whatever, kind of pursue compliance. So I was just curious, kind of a ballpark idea of like what that might be for the city.
The biggest issue with the, the data is not so much in sending out a letter to the correct address. It's mainly from the fact that I can't just take, I can't just download all the data and throw that into graphs right away. I have to actually go through and like figure out, okay, which addresses are being duplicated simply for, like one has a zip code and one doesn't. So I have to massage the data a bit to give you these big picture numbers. But in terms of going after people, it's not an issue whatsoever. In fact, we, we kind of, at least with these first few batches, we already know that they're oper, or there's no question that these people are operating, essentially.
And I'll just add to that, if, you know, once you get into the folks that are not compliant, there is gonna be some, some heavy staff time going out with building and making sure that they're compliant from a building code perspective. But once people get into compliance, that revenue is gonna continue to come in. We're not gonna be out there inspecting them over and over again, you know, unless there's complaints or issues at that property. But there will be an initial upfront cost to get people into compliance, but once they're in, that, that revenue is gonna keep coming in.
Yeah, I think, you know, but my guess is that these probably aren't entirely static. It's not like people have entered the market and are going to just stay in the market and that there won't be additional people entering or leaving that market, so it will continue to fluctuate. And the other thing, you know, that I was just, I'm just, I mean, no matter what, it sounds like there's still gonna be a net benefit. I'm just wondering, you know, that overall estimate, that number, the, I can't remember, we said 146,000 to 229,000? I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly, but, you know, it's that, I, those other things, I think, need to be kind of like figured into that because even though I, I know that that's gonna come from different areas of the budget and that kind of thing, that still does overall kind of change that picture a little bit on how profitable, you know, it's still worth it, it's still a good thing. I'm just curious, like how much that's gonna bite into that? We need to contribute a certain amount of money each year, like how that might kind of change that possibly?
So just to be clear, so when we have people that are permitted and they're doing it appropriately, that's already built into, there's people, I've signed three in the last three weeks of people getting permitted. That goes through a certain process, it's already built into our budget right now. So the only thing that's gonna be an extra cost is making up for the backlog of people who aren't. Because once that happens and the people get into the permitting thing, even though it fluctuates, some go out, some come in, some go out, some come in, that's already happening right now. So that's already built into our budget and we're, we're doing that now. There will be a backlog and that's the reason why they're doing them in batches. And so that we don't get heavily inundated by, you know, 60 or 70 of them that need to go out and have to be inspected.
All right, cool, thanks.
Any further questions? Councilmember Molton, do you have any questions? Comments? Concerns?
Just to say, thank you for this report. I know a lot of folks were concerned about this. People have brought it up. It's really good to see what a small percentage of the housing is actually taken up with this and contributing to having more visitors in the city. Thank you for the information.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Millar.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on then to our Council Reports and we will start with Councilmember Molton.
I don't have any travel to report and I'm just gonna pass my mic for this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, you know, no, no travel, but lots of meetings lately between, you know, JPA and city, county, two by two. CalCities is very active and I'll actually be going down in April for Board of Directors meeting. But committee meetings like Environmental Quality, Government, Governance, Transparency, Labor Relations, we just met for hours, talk about bills. A few of us met on those committees. But that's really interesting stuff going on at the city that affect, or at the state that affect the city. So I'll be bringing more bills back for review in the future. Thanks.
I'm Councilmember Castellano. Let's see, fairly busy with committees and things like that. Though not directly related to my work on council, I've been attending a Community Schools Advisory Council Working Group. But it intersects quite a bit with this work and thinking about the community context for education and how the community as a whole can really work together to support children succeeding in school and life, you know, and families as part of that. So it's something that I've been thinking quite a bit about and I, I don't have a specific ask or anything like that, but I just wanted to let folks know it's on my mind and, and I think that there's some opportunity there for the, for the city to engage more with that, with creating those connections. Continuing to host a housing working group, I attended a HWMA board meeting, Eureka Main Street meeting. And then I had the pleasure the last couple of days of touring around the visiting director of the California Arts Council, John Moscone. He came to town to learn more about the Humboldt County arts and culture scene. And, you know, yeah, it was a real honor to introduce him to many community leaders and really help share how robust art and culture workers are really, or how art and culture workers are, are really creating a sense of community well-being through, through their activities. And he was very engaged and kind of inspired by meeting people and wants to come back again. So really, just nice to have someone who's, you know, kind of working directly in Sacramento with policy to have a sense of what we're doing here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Conchera Stiloch?
Yeah, I got to meet with Nancy Olson from the Chamber of Commerce. She invited me over. Was just super impressed with her. She's just an incredible advocate, I think, for our business community and has a lot of really cool pioneering ideas, so I'm really kind of excited about the way she's gonna help some of our small businesses. Two by two with board supervisors, when I wasn't on mute and driving down the highway very fast and apparently making it hard for everybody to hear. Sorry, guys. And then, yeah, I met with, you know, just a few constituents and then another business owner. I got to do the pathway to payday, got to go and visit. That was, I love that. I love how like just very committed and invested like staff is too and just everybody like succeeding, how excited they are about that and just what a remarkable group of people too that came and I didn't, last time I was there on the third day, this time I got to go on the first day when people introduced themselves, I got to really hear about the people participating in that program. And there's just a lot of remarkable people and, yeah, I just, I wish them all the best. It's really something. And I got to find out that our city manager helped participate in the creation of that, which I think is really cool. And then I, yesterday got to meet with one of our new local nonprofits that are feeding the homeless. So on Sundays, making big tasty burritos to take out, rain, rain or shine or sleet, getting them out there and feeding them every Sunday, which is, I think, the one day that mission or free meal, I think, is like closed, I think, on Sunday. So they're filling that gap with hot burritos, which is just really cool. So that was my last couple weeks.
Great. So I think we got everybody. Well, I just want to share my appreciation for all you guys. I just love the dedication of our staff and our council members and our team to making our city a better place. It's just, and tonight, it's very clear, just in listening to everybody, so thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.